We're gonna reconvene the budget hearings for today. Reconvene the budget hearings for today, and we've got EMA account 153. Good evening gentlemen, good afternoon gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon sir.
Not quite even yet.
If nobody else, I have a quick question to start with. I'm gonna look at account 200300, repair equipment. That seems to be consistent, however, later we're gonna be discussing a new vehicle. I didn't know if your vehicle costs were in that, or is that other equipment that's repairs?
It's sirens.
Anything that we have to buy? Cause that's basically the account that we use.
Sirens, repairs come out of there?
Everything.
Radios, whatever.
Radios.
Okay.
So when it says repair.
I'm just making sure it's not the vehicles, that's all.
Oh, no. Not enough money there for a vehicle. How about you guys on your office?
When you say vehicle, I don't know what you mean.
Oh, I meant the Yukon.
Repair, when you had to make.
Repair equipment if you have to.
But that's coming out of there.
Bob doesn't pay for my.
That's coming out of somebody else's budget right now.
Okay.
Out of the garage budget.
2001, office supplies. It does show that you spent a grand last year, but to date, and you're asking for a grand, but to date you've only spent 130. Do you anticipate some big purchases within the last few months here? Or could we maybe cut that down a little bit? Your turn.
You know, office supply is something that.
I mean, you spent it last year, that's why we're looking at it.
Well, ink, I mean, he knows what might go wrong between the two offices, you know?
Yeah, we've used up all of our ink that we had purchased. So we are in need of ink, we just have, we try and, or at least I do, I try and be frugal as far as stuff, cause we don't know when something's gonna pop up. So I don't order it until I absolutely need it, I'm not gonna order it and just stockpile it.
And stock it.
Wait, do you mean toner? Toner?
Yeah, toner, ink, yeah, all of those.
Good one Joey.
Thank you Joey.
You need toner, see the auditors, she's got a.
Mucho, mucho toner.
Same thing with uniforms, you look like you're gonna, you spent 1,500 last year, but you're only 224 this year. You're gonna buy more uniforms? Actually, that's incorrect, we have bills that are pending, we only have $715 left in that account. Once I put the bills in.
Okay.
And gas and fuel. We, right now have 2,500, 2,500 left. But that, you know, we haven't started the upgrades. We're just gonna put them out the office and on the streets for the rest of the year.
You want bicycle? All right. Be a three wheeler, let change your finger up.
And repair and equipment, we discussed, right?
Yes, yeah.
That's a little over $7,000.
That's where I started.
Where we at right now.
What's freight and express, what are you spending that on? Freight and express. If we have to ship anything back, we've always had just $50 in that account. If we have to ship something, that's all it is. I don't think we actually used it last year, I'm not positive.
It shows you did, but.
What'd you?
Huh? 2019.
They spent it in 18.
In 18.
They haven't spent anything this year. What's your pleasure?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve as is.
Motion by Santana, sir, a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Molnauer on the question. Are you none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
See you later.
We got a little bit of time to do.
Maintenance?
Maintenance.
And then announce printing too, I think he'll do?
He was first on the agenda for tomorrow, so we're up for that. That's exactly what I was thinking, we could start at nine, so at 8:30 tomorrow morning.
And I saw that they're the office of printing.
You need any toner?
That's good.
And I was on it too. Where are they?
You're the only one.
I know, I guess so.
About this far out.
Gotta have a sense of humor.
All good.
Okay.
Share.
By the time we find.
It's above.
In-house printing.
The building markets.
It's above in-house printing.
142.
Uh, yeah. So Larry's two, so you know, we're not doing anything with 100 accounts. So we're just gonna look at your twos and threes. Maybe if you even start by saying, is there any big increases that you were looking for? Did you go through this and try to cut anything on your own?
I did, I got about three, four places I've asked for increases, I also gave back in two places. One of them is in the janitorial services. And the reason I did that is because I've gone through the budget and of what we have for this year. My expenditures in the jail are projected by the end of the year are gonna be right around $49,400 to date. We spent about $21,000 just on our janitorial supplies, which is 38% of my budget. And that still leaves me, I have 10 other buildings that we supply for. So it's, we're going through it rather quickly, you know?
Okay, so where, you said like you cut in two areas and then you looked for increase. Let's kinda, can you narrow that down for us please?
Yeah, repair buildings, we had, I'm looking, I've asked for, we had $55,000 into there. I've used almost $30,000 in five months, just on the repairs that we've had in the buildings. I've asked for that to have a $25,000 increase, which you put it at 80,000. Our air handlers, we had $6,000 budgeted, we had to take care of all these LG units throughout the, in all the buildings. And since I've asked for that to be just taken up to an increase of 10, make it 16,000. So, you know, materials are starting to cost more, you know, we're losing the free ons going up in price, a lot of things are starting to get a little bit more costly. I've given back 7,700 in the electrical account. Water and sewage, if I anticipate the way it's been going, I'm giving back about 1,700 in there. And then at the major repairs, I've asked for an increase of 10,000.
We have big increases here. You have big increases here at the Fort County complex, sir?
We are seeing some increases on things that we're, I mean, we've got a lot of rooftop fans that are showing a lot of wear, we're starting to replace those, but you can see that we're gonna have to get into those in the next year to start replacing even more of them. So we're seeing a lot of stuff that's original, that's needing to be replaced.
This is a kick on you, but this stuff was not talked about when we went through this whole energy savings program that was supposed to be, all those type things supposed to be worked on.
And just to clarify, some of the things that I'm also kinda doing is we're changing, we're going through the jail right now and taking a lot of lights I found, we were replacing about every three to four weeks, we were changing lights in the, so we're changing them all to LEDs, which I've gotten the people to give us a five-year guarantee, that if it goes out in five years, they're paying for it. So we're trying to change over some of those things too. And also I'm trying to get into the bathroom areas where we put sensors on things, so that we can get that, so our lights aren't staying on, and it'll keep our energy costs down a little bit.
But I guess I'm asking, are you staying involved with Amerisco? What's, how's it standing that we're getting, are we supposed to have all this energy savings right now? Lights and everything, before you even did a light bulb. These were all changed, so they were, all the lights were changed from the big contestants to smaller, that's smaller too.
Right.
So it's still energy efficient, so, and they should be burning out, but.
It's, we're not having as much problems with, I should clarify, as much problems with the lay-in lights as we do with more of our jail incandescent, our halogen lighting and things like that, is where we have our bigger problems with markets. What they've, I don't think they got into the jail, I have to look into that to see what all they did, you know, when they did an energy savings thing.
Yeah, I know.
So I really can't answer that honestly.
So are we still under contract with them yet?
No. Nope, we paid the last $5,000 last year.
Paying is fine, but that's just a payment, but I mean, they were supposed to.
Where's the energy savings report?
No, and as a matter of fact, last year when we had a couple of these units that went down, they wouldn't even touch them. They said that they are not under warranty anymore, and, and so.
Okay.
They wouldn't touch them.
We're gonna find out where our report is at, otherwise we won't have, we're gonna take action on this, cause we, we haven't seen any of our reports that we're supposed to give them. Just couldn't make the last payment does not mean.
It's done.
They're done, they're not done, they had promised us savings.
Are you talking to me or Joey, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
So you would like me to, I guess I would need the actual contract?
The commissioners for the contract.
The commissioners entered the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And find out where, we have not got any reports, cause all this stuff you talked about is supposed to be taken care of, so that was.
I think we looked into this last year.
We were supposed to be getting energy savings.
Well, I think the commissioners last year asked Doug to look into it, and he said that, and, and I have the contract also in my office, and Doug said that, no, that they, they were finished, that they, so.
I'm not saying they're not finished, but they aren't finished as far as we're concerned. We paid them for reports, we have not received reports. That's, they broke a contract.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've ever received any reports on them.
That's part of the contract.
They broke our, they broke our contract, so I wanna know where the reports are at, cause that was promised, I went to those meetings. Me and, um.
Yeah, I don't think that.
Me and Mr. Bernanke went to those meetings.
We can, we can find out if the commissioners have any, but I don't think they do.
Because of the problem with the commissioner, they were supposed to directly report to us also, that was in the contract.
Well, let's start with the contract Joey, we can get, we'll go from there.
Right. I don't believe they upheld their part of the contract, cause they were supposed to give us the cost savings, reports, everything, and to my knowledge, I haven't seen anything here since, since the day they finished.
Did they make a guarantee guys to cost savings when they sold you?
That's what I understand.
You'll have to check that contract.
Yeah.
Yep.
Answer's yes. So I'm reading here, the 2018 requested budget was 20,391 in 2018, under your, your. And you're requesting 20,312?
Requesting less money?
So I don't, I don't understand what.
Yeah, but he said there was more increase, I added increases and decreases, and that's more money than, so I'm not getting with the.
I hear what you're saying. Was there, there's also a change in the 100s, remember that?
There's actually, didn't it?
No, no, the change in the 100s was a decrease, because it changed the staff.
We gave one employee back in the, in the 100s.
Well, we paid for it, though we traded, we traded off, but you still get higher for it.
Yeah, there's still money, there's still money to give back.
Okay. Your, your other employee that is our county home employees, are they still cleaning up that basin, are they still shredding all the stuff that you're supposed, you're supposed to be doing?
Yes.
How's it look down there? Pretty good?
Good.
Yeah. I guess, we gained some head with him. I, unless Joey, I'm seeing something wrong, did you see this, I actually see a decrease, if it's just, because you have an increase for your employees, you have, you want it to count.
Could we discuss the maintenance contracts, because there's a significant decrease there? Ian, I don't know why we're going down so significantly, I don't, I'm not sure where we were at and what's the difference.
I think some of that stuff was carried over last year from what I understood, that weren't paid at the end, that's why it was a little bit.
Last year he requested, you're talking about maintenance contracts at the bottom?
Yeah, 300s have it.
He, mine shows he requested 30,000 last year.
No, the 30,000 is 18, 40,000 was 19.
What, 18, right?
And then.
19 was 40,000.
But it's much higher, the actual already.
But he actually spent more than that by.
So I don't understand why, how we can go from this.
Because a lot of the contracts or the invoices that should have been paid last year.
Came in.
Came in this year.
So.
And they were not encumbered, so we had to pay them out of this year's budget.
Okay. So you're familiar with all of that?
Mm-hmm.
So the 40,000 is more reasonable on an annual basis?
Still company?
Correct.
Is the, the water softener salt had community corrections? Is that part of this, or is that?
No, that's another issue that we've just been, we've been looking into here, just because we found that the water softener hasn't worked in the past two and a half years over there, so there's no salt on that right now, but I'm looking into getting pricing and trying to figure out what it's gonna take to get that water softener back online.
Well, let me ask you a stupid question, so if it hasn't worked in two and a half years, what do we need it for? Cause I know that, because before that, the person that was doing your job came in for a whole huge amount of money for salt. And we're not talking, once that thing's up and running, you know how much salt they use?
Then we buy it semi.
Yeah, we buy about a pallet, about a pallet every month. Okay. We run a pallet every month, actually two pallets every month here, so about a pallet every month over there is where it would probably be at.
So where's, has anybody suffered because of this?
I believe the only thing that I can see that's suffering now is we see it in the dish machines, we see it in some of the piping repairs that we're having to do. We're starting to experience the deterioration on some of the equipment. Can I put it right towards that? I can't, I don't, I can't say that for fact, you know, it could be just of age.
How much do you think we saved in two and a half years without going to salt?
Well, about $600 a pallet of salt, you know, we're looking at, you know, $7,200. $7,200 saving just in the salt.
So it hasn't worked in two years, is there, twenty years are playing, I mean, you said you're getting somebody out there to look at?
We're looking at trying to get pricing, see what it's gonna cost to get it back up and going, to see whether or not, and, you know, I want, I'll investigate to see if that is the cause of some of our problems up here.
I'm just surprised that two and a half years ago, somebody didn't come before us and say, hey, the water softener.
Well, they did actually, they came to us and they went, they approved an increase in salt, I remember that.
The salt, but they didn't say, the water softener out there took a dump, we need to do something, I mean, so for two and a half, well, let's say two years prior to you coming in, there was never a mention that the water softener out there was bad. I'm kinda surprised that being the liaison for out there too, then nobody's contacted me.
I found it buried behind there, they buried it behind cabinets and stuff, so I mean, it's just been buried kinda, not being used, it's on a bypass, not even being used right now.
So what equipment you think that they have out here? Dishwasher?
Does it, they got the dishwasher that's out there, that's our, that's the main thing that gets used, utilized with that, is their dishwasher.
I'm cool, so how much you think each dishwasher would cost?
What do we spend on the one in the jail?
Well, I wouldn't even want, I mean, it'd be hard for me to even guess, but I would think a dishwasher is gonna cost us probably around $14,000, $15,000?
Think we spend 10?
How much did we spend on the dishwasher?
I thought they 10. They don't have a kitchen there, what dishes?
What, they have a dishwasher, cause they cook their meals down here.
Detention, I'm sorry, detention, juvenile detention, the lower.
Juvenile center.
Yeah, juvenile center.
Okay, alright.
I'm sorry, I was, I missed hope, I'm, that's my.
Yeah, they have a full kitchen.
Right.
Okay.
I got the visit.
I meant, I'd like to see if we get a handle on, on the salt, cause I remember, I was remembering something like $12,000 or something like that for salt. Was it? I thought so, cause I called, cause I went, got involved and called the Port Water Department, and I met with them at.
That was when Jerry Cooley was still here.
Like 12 grand?
And it was, it was, yeah.
And just, just.
We can probably look back in the ledger and see.
Let's just, let's use 10 grand for a number, so that's, that's 10, 10's 20 and a half there, 25,000. I can buy a dishwasher if they, if, let it run until it doesn't break, I guess.
Yes.
For two and a half years, you're gonna put in $10,000 of salt there.
But I don't think we reduced the salt budget, nobody's come to us and saying, hey, you can cut my salt budget, cause I'm not.
Yeah, but he went from, if you look at 2018, you know, only 1,000.
We're, we're gonna look at 2015 and see.
See what they spent.
Yeah.
Cause whatever you, that was damage, I mean, you're probably, you're not gonna save what you did, which.
We're just, we do maintain it now, we change the parts that are, were out and they're deteriorating and we replace them.
2065.
You'll destroy all your pipes.
After a while.
Yep.
And that bill will be a little bit more than a $14,000.
I know, you got a good point.
So you were, you were saying like three pallets a month?
One pallet.
We run about two pallets a month, right here, right here.
And so.
It's because of the increase in the jail right now, we've seen it, when they increased, we've started saw the increase in how much salt.
They use a pallet here and a pallet out there.
We're using, no, we're, we are.
Using two here, one there.
Two here, yes. And if they would burn a pallet?
We're, I'm saying they would probably burn a pallet with what.
Probably cause of the kitchen.
That's three a month, and that's $21,600. 18, did you say 600 a pallet?
I, I believe it's, it's somewhere in there.
So 1,800 dollars times 12, that's 21,600.
Well, that, he doesn't have that in his budget, so he's not, he's not even doing enough, his budget isn't enough even by salt for here then?
No.
On that number, so.
So we're gonna change that and increase the salt on that?
No.
We're gonna let contests.
No more salt.
It's not good for you.
In 2014, we spent 5,500, but then in 2015, we grabbed it to 2,000.
So what was it, Jerry, Jerry came to us one year for a huge amount?
Okay, so I read, I read, he was the water department, we've got a guy in charge of the water department.
Alright.
Yeah. Well, the reductionals want to quit working.
Well, no, this goes past that, plus it hadn't worked in.
You have 2016, Joey? 16?
And that's the only thing I can find, it hasn't worked in that long, I can only say for how long I know it hasn't worked.
It was a, it was a big year, it was a big issue during, yeah, during my, it had to be 14 or 15, cause I was up here too.
Okay, so it hasn't worked since 14. Which is big number for 14.
We're doing it good. Because I remember him coming and talking about that night. Sorry, I remember him coming to the council and talking about it and complaining that he had to spend so much.
He was complaining because he was having to supply them with salt that was coming out his butt.
Right.
Correct. But that was community corrections, not juvenile, so.
Right.
So it's working at community.
And I don't supply any salt at corrections.
But it's not working at juvenile.
I don't think we transferred it over to community corrections though, did we?
I can't imagine why we, we would have separated that, salt and salt.
Is there anything else?
Does anybody have anything else on that one?
Well, we know we're not gonna cut the salt, but.
No, no, I, I mean.
Well, let, let us investigate that salt, because I know that he came back, I know he did.
Alright, well, and we know we did too, so, so what's the, what's your preference on 142?
Make the motion for the budget as it was presented.
Motion by?
Rosenbaum.
It's gonna say Mike, that's gonna actually be nice. By Rosenbaum, is there a second? Second, second by Santana. Is there any other questions? Are you none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thanks Larry. Coroner's here. Treasurer's here.
Larry? Come on down.
Somebody's supposed to be ahead of me?
Nope.
Don't?
No, we snuck somebody in already.
You did?
Larry was not for tomorrow morning, so we snuck him in.
Okay.
And then we got into a little salt.
We got a little salty.
Pepper, sugar.
That was lunch, right?
Yeah.
Salt and pepper?
And it disappeared.
Sure are you.
I'm 103.
There she is.
Yeah, but that's different.
Yeah.
Alright, so if you'd like to go over your proposed cuts?
That was not, that was not in the agenda that I was given through an email, that maybe was last week. I'm sorry.
Well, right now?
I did not see it.
$94.
I see.
$105.
I just got like four things, mileage, dues, tax bills, and payroll. And I do not have any type of perpetuation fund, so if the computers crash, then it's a quickie with IT, and then we'll have to go from there for that, there's no extra funding in the treasures department.
That was an order that we wrote, that was an order.
Correct.
You jumped ahead of it. You're too far, guys.
80,000 parcels and about 57,000 mailing bills. So the company we use produces everything, and then they will also put the multiple addresses in one envelope. I think if we would do it individually, the amount of hours and possibly printing machines, you know, where they don't jam up and stop on you halfway through, was always a complaint in previous years, say 10 years ago.
Microphones guys, Molnauer.
I mean, we get the cheaper rate of 30, or 42, or I think it was 38 cents an envelope, right now it's 55, you know, for regular mail, so I mean, we get a big discount with the volume of mailing through the company. I don't think we would be able to sort it right now, when the assessor sends out their bills, we do not assort it per zip code identifying to get cheaper rates. So, right there we're saving postage on it, and then the time, paper, costs of materials and.
Last year's.
And right now I think the copy machine is in the voter registration office, so we're at two different locations to even print something.
Something we need to look at possibly?
Oh, I think it's well worth the amount we're sending to the company, they, they work with Lao, they, actually they found mistakes with Lao before.
You got your mic on?
Nope.
You want me to cut staff, because we're gonna do mailings locally, that we would use more part-time help? Is that what you're looking at?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out why years ago we got away from it, why we haven't went back. Computers are supposed to make us more efficient, and it doesn't seem like we ever get anywhere with that. It's like we still have the same amount of employees or more.
Well, I already cut a person and a half, just at the time that I started, so I mean, I mean, we have cut a person in the treasures department. So that was a misconception of what you just said.
Okay, I'm just asking to see where you're at.
I think all the treasures, even more treasures have gone to vendors now to print their bills. I think that out of this 92 counties, I bet you there's only 15 that might do in-house printing. There's probably 80, 75 to 80 counties that hire a company. One thing is the liability that the tax bills are out on time, and then the vendors are One thing is the liability that the tax bills are out on time and then the vendors are so, you know, able to merge with the bills so easily now.
Have we done anything with cross-training?
Not, my staff has never cross-trained with anybody. We do bankruptcies, no other office does bankruptcies, we do the alcohol beverage releases, so, you know, with the state commission with that, so a lot of mobile home transfers. And that works with the BMV, so I mean, we, we don't do local, but it's usually with other departments throughout the state or the feds with bankruptcies.
I don't have any other questions, I'm fine with it.
Anybody else? I'm, I'm just looking like on your 30005, printing, office supplies, so you?
That would be the tax bills, is it 23,005?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the tax bills, the 80,000 tax bills. So they cost us about, what, 50 cents and then mailing?
So last year you spent 18,700, this year you spent 18,900, is that pretty accurate what that costs?
I would think so, correct, because we might have more additional parcels if there was another building built or, well, I think we have so many parcels, but say farmland, cut up into a subdivision or something. So we might have additional parcels or additional personal property tax. So the assessor has more businesses out there, we would have more taxes because of personal taxes also.
And if somebody merges their tax bills, you have.
That might possibly reduce one, so.
So can that be reduced at this time, Bert?
I think that was real legitimate.
It's 23,000 you're spending, you're not going over 19 at this time, but.
You wanna cut a couple thousand, then I don't think our company's gonna be going much higher than what we are unless, say, we have a really huge influx of.
If you took 2,000, that would at least give you a little bit of cushion here.
It's cushion.
You notice that you're getting not close to it.
Okay.
Okay.
I just was following Nancy Hawkins, I haven't really looked to see that if, you know, how much.
So we're talking to go to 21,500?
Right on, 30005.
And then are we doing a little bit on office supplies too or not?
Again, I could possibly get a printer out of that if I had to, you know, one broke down or something, you know, because we got the printers at the counter, I mean, that's all that, you know, that we try to make sure they're all in working condition.
How old are the printers now?
I don't know, they're purchased prior to me, so.
Okay, so that's a few.
At least three years, yeah.
We typically don't buy that out there anyway, so they can come back first year or whatever.
That's a 400.
Right, a 4, right.
So what do you want to do?
I was gonna suggest we reduce.
But the office supplies is, we do buy the toners out of that, so toner costs, not how many receipts are requested. What's going on with toners?
Watch TV.
No, we get, we get receipts, printer, toner.
We have to buy our toners.
Yeah, we do. And they work with you, Joey? Well, shame on you guys. My Lena's not here, but I mean, you wish him luck.
That is, in my count, two departments now besides me, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, our office.
There was a little bit of a joke, okay, you got it, it was just, it was just.
There's a word between copier and printer, I would think, if the copier does go through Darlene.
Yes.
But our printers for receipts are, that's us with the office supplies.
She said she stopped powering toner, it was just a joke, it was just, okay, so.
Or maybe I should then, before you guys take money away from it. I gave up 200 already, or 2,000 already.
There's 318, the mileage count, shows that you spent 136 dollars in 2018, shows you spent 61 dollars so far this year.
Yeah, I was at 1,000 at one time when I first came in, I keep lowering it because I don't charge the county to go back and forth in Michigan City, so. I think the other office holders did. But just in case I get, need money for gas and, you know.
So what do you feel comfortable keeping that at?
300?
It's pretty much banking deposits.
300 dollars.
But then if I use a, like this year, we had an extra conference that I used, that had to go to Kokomo, so that was just another 90 bucks, but if I run shy, I'll come back.
Absolutely. That, we, we're gonna get it later on with the sheriff and the other car, maybe use the pool card.
Oh, that's an idea. It doesn't happen that often that there's an extended conference.
Or that is a pool card.
Mike, did you want to do something on the office?
Okay, so what, were you telling me on the mileage?
The mileage, we're going to 300.
Half of it?
Yeah.
Okay. If I can't take the money to the bank, I'll let you know.
And then the.
Maybe the sheriff can come take us.
The office supplies, I was thinking moving that down 500 to 2,300?
How, I would, I would fight you on that one.
You haven't spent it, well, you've used 12,900, but there is five months left.
It's just five more months ago, we have to restock.
You didn't spend it last year?
Oh, we spent everything, I got it down to $2.
You spent 1,875 dollars last year.
2,000.
Out of 2,800.
Out of 2,000.
2,000 I only had, I upped it because I merged some of the other stuff into one, so it's a lot easier for me to know what I have.
So this year, in next year's budget, you proposed at 2,800. That's why we're, we're talking about cutting it for next.
That's what she has this year too.
She's at 2,800.
I just love that.
She's at 2,800 for 2019.
Yeah.
See, that's what I was thinking, I got the buyer.
She wasted a little last year.
But you would come back for that?
Right, to 400, yes.
So you spent.
Take 400.
18, no, she's talking 400 account, you spent 1,875 last year.
Okay, out of 2,000 budget?
Correct.
Okay, and then I'm at 1,200 right now, is that?
1,200.
Okay, so I got 800.
Next year is 2,800, he suggested you take that down to 2,300.
Okay, we'll go for it.
Okay.
Yeah, because if I can't spend it to buy a printer out of that, I'd have to, yeah, I had trouble getting a shredder last time.
Somebody's 500 off of that.
But then you guys would deal with me if I had it in there, but.
We do.
Okay.
Deal with it, please. Alright, do you have anything else?
I don't see anything.
So.
2,300 on office supplies, 2,000 less on the printing.
300.
And 300 on the mileage. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And I'll come back if I need anything.
Motion to approve as stated by Lynn.
Did you get the three things?
So motion by Molnauer, second by Rosenbaum, is there any other questions? If you're done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can we get some toner for some other departments?
She heard it.
Thank you very much, Lynn.
Bob, come on down. How are you doing today?
I'm good, you guys are in a good mood today, so far?
Pretty much.
That's all you're talking about toner.
We just had lunch, so we're good.
I asked Joey if I should come before lunch or after, she said come after. I really did ask her that, she said no.
Bob, I do have a few questions, I just didn't get a chance to ask her before. What is usually, under professional services, I, I see the numbers keep going wonky, so I'm trying to figure out what goes in there. I mean, what do you, what do we, what do you have to?
Okay, those, the professional services, those are all the deputies that we pay. I'm a salaried, and then my chief deputies are salaried, and these are all the other deputies, we have nine other deputies, and they're paid per call, they're not paid for waiting, they're paid only if they, they have a call. This year our call load is, it's way up. I, I'm not sure why, but we, we've had to use so many more people.
I, I just need to understand what was there. I, I'm trying to figure out what is the current, what is spent professional. And then on, do you have questions regarding 30031, 30032, the toxicology and X-ray lab and stuff? These numbers are, are starting to really climb and we're, you know, we have in the budget for 15,000, we spent 1,700, and 23,000, we spent 5,600 so far, so I'm just not sure where it's gonna end up, but I, I, you know, X-ray lab and more costs are much higher than a year ago compared to 5, 55, 65 versus less than 800. And then the other one is reverse, 14,000 versus only 1,700, so, you know, just trying to get a feel for this, I, I don't know what would cause us to, to spend this, this is all because you're testing to see how they died and, and to come up with something for.
A lot of it is our call load and the thing is now, especially the X-ray toxicology fees, we are doing, which we never did before up until six months ago, we're autopsying every single drug overdose. Now, it was never in my budget to do that, drug task force, unless we get some help from them to do this, and I'm not sure if that would ever come, this is the only way they can put an addict, I should say, a dealer behind bars. And so what, the reason they're doing, we're doing autopsies, and I don't, I don't really want to do these because it's an obvious what they died of, they have to rule out everything other than drugs. So in other words, if the guy said, well, he, when the defense comes up and say, well, he could have had a heart attack, he could have had this, we have to rule out everything it was not, and that's the reason the X-rays are up so much. We're X-rating everybody, we've had seven homicides, you know, five with weapons, we've had to do all those.
Who's asking for the money, the prosecutors or the judges?
The prosecutor wants us to autopsy.
Why, get it, it's like a mandate, we just created an internal mandate, we created itself, it should be coming out of his budget if he's man, if he's demanding every single one of these, because you're right, the drug person could have had a heart attack, is that a heart attack caused by the drug, because that most people do if you have, if you're. So if he's requesting this, why are you the recipient of this whole thing that should be coming out of their budget?
I'm agreeing with that also.
Can you track, you able to track those so you know specifically?
Yes.
This is the amount that?
For example, we have a drug overdose last week, obvious drug overdose. They got the, the deceased's phone number or cell number, tracked out who they bought it, who they bought it from, so now they're going after the guy that sold it. They asked me to do an autopsy, I didn't really need to do an autopsy, I know what he died of because we already did toxicology on him, but the prosecutor said we, we gotta have this in order to prosecute the guy that we have now that we're going after. And, and that's the reason that this is up, and like I say, six months ago, we didn't do that, but now I think they have three court cases pending right now because of what we're doing.
And it's okay, but the prosecutor gets money for those type of things, you have to reimburse, you don't get any reimbursement for that, is that right?
No, that comes strictly out of my budget.
So this is an ask or a tell, is it mandated to you or is it, you're asking?
The prosecutor tells you to do something, you pretty much gotta do it, don't you?
I don't know, this is mandated. Well, this is mandated.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking, because it's gotta be mandated.
Well, you're right, Mark, because I, I argued one this last week, I said, I don't think we need to do this, and they said, we do need to do this, so I, I did it, I scheduled it, came out of my budget. You know, and it. At $2,400 a pop, that's what that costs out of my budget, you know, I'm struggling with this.
Well, I get it, trust me.
But if it comes out of your budget instead, it'll come out of ours.
One department or the other, is what you're saying?
Because I don't think, I don't think the prosecutor's gonna get reimbursed unless they get restitution from the.
Right.
Victim somehow, I mean, the, the person that did it.
Going to trying to.
No, exactly. And I wonder if there's a way to.
Well, I, I mean, I'd love help with this, absolutely.
Like we just talked to the prosecutor, see if, see if he can chip in something, take, take the 20, you know, that's coming out of his.
He's got, he's got funds that he, that we could, we could say the prosecutor could don't pay for it because if he gets the extra cash that he's, that he's put away in, in his funds and he gives out, that he doles out.
Because I believe we've done seven for him already, seven times 2,400, that tells you where my budget's going. And he just, almost right now, is increasing his face all the time too.
They're good, yeah. Alright, we'll have to, so what do you want to do with this, gentlemen?
I think we need to make the, I'll make a motion to approve, but we also, somebody needs to contact the prosecutor and see if he can help out a little bit, it's still coming.
Done.
Mr. Rosenbaum's doing that as we speak.
So I'll follow up and.
And then we can see if we need to make an adjustment.
I second the motion.
Second, motion by Mr. Molnauer, second by Mr. Yagowski. Is there any other questions and then hopefully we'll get some kind of an answer maybe even tomorrow. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Also, if there's anything I can, you know, I'd be better to approach the prosecutor with you, I mean, we're in this together, so.
Also, you know, I'm gonna ask you, don't you?
Pardon?
I still haven't got any, uh, bill or nothing.
I contacted right after I talked to you, that was two months ago, contacted the police, I said, there's money there for this DARE program and for this education program, and I gave, I even gave them your cell number.
I understand, just, you know, it was for this books, Kelly books that I have.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you said I know.
Give money for this and I can't, if I don't have the bill, I can't give money to it, and I don't see it being issued out in the schools.
I don't know.
And who are you contacting?
The, um. First, last name is Sights, he's a Miss, or LaPorte Police Information Officer.
Okay.
But he, but he runs a program for the whole county.
LaPorte Police Chief?
Yeah.
Police, uh, Public Relations Officer?
Yes, last name is Sights, I think it's, Mike is it, Mike Sights?
No, Mike Sights. Mike Sights, but I don't think it's.
I don't know, that's probably not it.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thanks.
Are we, what do you want to do now, we got voter registration at 2 o'clock.
I'd say, we have to get two things before that, we need to bring up the fact of the assessor first. Let's get that money, we're gonna reduce that.
Yeah, the 1,800. Yes, and then also Larry is back to talk about in-house printing. The commissioners are now moving in-house printing under Larry, under building maintenance, and so we need to go back to in-house printing to approve their budget.
So can we go to assessor first?
Yep, sure.
So under the assessor, it was under the 109, was it, was it under 109 the dues or was it?
Yes.
So once we do this, once we wipe out this, it's nothing other than 100.
So he's taken out the dues, zeroing that out, correct? Account 30009.
Do we know who made the motion the first time around?
Yes, you made the motion and Jeff made the second.
Or do it, or make a new one, whatever.
Good with that?
Yep.
Alright.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Minus 1,800.
And, and. And now you need to add it to the reassessment fund.
Now we go to the reassessment fund.
Right.
We're gonna add a 30009, 30009 dues for 1,800. And do you know who made that? Can you also tell us if it was?
We have to make a motion.
We have to make a motion. So now.
So you can just add that as part of?
I'll add it as part of my motion.
Correct.
Okay.
Good with that?
Yes, I am.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Okay.
What's that number again?
Good.
So you're just treating the number here, 300.
Larry, you're under printing, is that what you're here about?
Yep. And Mark, just, we've, we've got the reports coming that you asked for from Amresco.
Good, thank you, sir.
Where's, uh, printing?
Right behind building maintenance. Right behind the building maintenance, it's 181.
So what's the purpose of moving people around, why did the commissioner want it off their budget?
I believe the biggest thing is so that we can just get a handle on keeping more track of the amount of papers being used, how things are getting out.
We, we had a problem this year, Casey was off for FMLA and nobody knew she was taking off, number one, and number two, we got way behind with our printing, so Darlene and Larry stepped in and caught everything, got everything up to date, and then the commissioners decided that it would probably be a better idea if in-house printing was under Larry.
So she's not, she's not appointed then?
So she.
I believe there's, if you would have seen something from HR requesting a reclassification of that position also.
Yeah, I think.
The functional committee there last week.
Yeah.
As long as and I both, you know, we see the need, we've addressed this issue many times since Mark and I have been on this council, but it always stayed where it was, but.
So she'll be under someone's supervision?
She should be under someone's supervision.
Is it gonna be the same person?
Yes.
Yeah, Casey.
Because that was the fear, she wouldn't sign off before because she was afraid that you thought you were trying to get rid of her.
No, we're, we're not trying to get rid, we're just trying to make a better accountability and make things run smoother so things get out faster.
She should know everybody. She's not being appointed by the commissioners.
She's gonna be an LTC, LTC two now.
If they approve it.
So he has an assistant come in.
Yes.
And then talked about who would kind of fill in for her. And he suggested part-time and Melissa and I told her, no. She'd be a full-time person that is overseeing this so that I have no issues later. Because if a part-time person leaves, then, then you're stuck again. You want somebody full-time.
Right. I'm trying to make sure that if she does, she's, her vacations, whatever, we're gonna cross-train someone so that we've always got someone that's trained in there.
Yeah, so we pretty much agree with that. The fear was.
Now, with the budget here, I just got it to see it last week, so I didn't get to really address, but it does need, I believe it needs to have some increase in it, the paper products in there. Especially with next year being a election year. I see what's going in and out of there.
That comes out, that is a common part of it here. She just says she prints her own stuff up election year. She was just before you. You didn't see that. So she's, she's not printing bad election stuff up.
Tax bills. Tax bill, tax bill.
Right. So now, so this, that's, there really isn't, she doesn't have large increases. Whenever she prints out, she prints and that's, she doesn't come up much for us for paper and stuff like that.
Right now, currently, paper falls under the commissioners. Commissioners pay for all, all paper.
Correct.
This would be probably specialized paper.
It is, like for stock, for your, our business cards, that stuff. So that, she has, as many years I've covered, she doesn't come back for any increases or commissioners don't come back for any increases for that.
What's the, the maintenance contract? You had mentioned something earlier.
I did get an email on that and, and that's only part of the maintenance contract for this budget. And again, it's, it really doesn't, it isn't cost-effective to do a maintenance contract on her main copier. It's like $95 a month and then with a 1,500 page allowance. And then if you print more than that, it's a penny per click. So a penny per image.
So she will bump that.
Yeah, she would go way above that. That's why I intentionally did not do it. Um, I believe Larry did put in a little bit of an increase because I know we just had to pay, I think it was 2,700 for, um, replacement parts in her copier.
Where did Larry put in?
There wasn't nothing put in on it because I said I'd never had this beforehand. So that's why I was saying, I think some of those things need to be increased a little bit.
Yeah. Oh, he didn't actually put it in. He's asking for, on his sheet, he hasn't.
So we haven't seen it. We haven't seen it.
No, no.
So, and you haven't given it to Joey yet?
Well, I just got handed this on Friday. I didn't know I was gonna be taking over, so.
I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we're.
So you're asking.
Same thing. I think the, I think the maintenance contracts need to be raised to 18.5, just to take care of maintenance issues that we have with the equipment that's not under contract. So that.
Like the numbering machines?
And the printer. The numbering machine is very old.
You would have to pay for any, any replacement parts.
But I guess, what are you, you're basing it off a hypothetical because we have.
Well, what we know is what we paid for.
History here to show that that.
Other than what we just had things replaced on that.
Understood. You look at 2018, 2019, which is, you don't see a history of that. That's what we're saying. There's no history of increases or no history of that stuff.
They haven't come back for extra things.
Paid by the commissioners. It's on the commissioner's account. Could that be moved today too? Or we don't know. Because that's, that's on their budget.
The paper?
Yep.
Yeah.
And so, um, the, um, clerk or treasurer is printing her stuff, getting it contracted out now. She's out contracting.
That's tax bills. Casey never printed tax bills.
Right. Because all of a sudden now there's a liability, whatever, but go ahead anyway. So.
The only thing with an election year, I don't know if she prints extra.
What benefit do we, what benefit do we have on?
But I think they print their own over there.
Okay, so what benefit we have on in-house printing then at this point? If we start increasing and doing all this stuff, like, what's the benefit of that? That we, that we have that we don't contract everything out?
I think that, I think that we, I think we took, um, paper away from the commissioners three years ago because we were having a problem with that, with Casey paying the bills. And so we took the, the paper away from the, the commissioner, we took, um.
Thanks for catching what it was.
In-house printing.
Actually, it was two folds to it. But the biggest thing was is that because we were buying in bulk for everything, that's why it was better to go through that to the commissioners.
I'm gonna pull up Lewis Paper right now so you can see how much we spend.
You, you asked a question about what would be the benefit. The thing with this is if jail comes, the sheriff comes and asks for something done, we can get it out right away and have it to him when he needs it. You know, I don't know how fast it would be.
Go to any one of these printing places, they do it within the same period of time.
And like I said, I don't know how fast they would be able to.
Same day. Now you're encouraging me now because I let it go because it was under, now you're, you're bringing this back to a boil. Now I meant, what's the purpose of it? Any printing place will put it within that same day.
Right.
Believe me, they love to do that kind of stuff. So I don't see the purpose of even having this, if this is the case anymore.
The equipment that we have now, is that under lease or agreement that we acquired it? The actual machine that she uses?
I believe we own all those machines. She does pay maintenance contract on the Rizzo, which is the big huge duplicator. It does one color at a time. So you have.
The $14,000.
I don't know. I don't know any of her. I know that I asked for a contract on the copier, or Larry did, and I got the, the quote. And it was $95 per month, up to 1,500 prints. After that, you pay a penny per print for black and white or six cents for colored. So it's not cost-effective to do a maintenance contract on that big copier they have. Everything else, I don't know the answer to.
I know what she was going and what we do about it, that it was put in other places. That's what happened. So I'm saying it's not one of the.
So what do you want to do on 181, since obviously this is gonna come up?
Let me just, let me just tell you that last year we paid, um, from, we paid from in-house printing for the paper. And it was 39,000 and they ran out of money. So we ended up paying out of the commissioners then for the paper. But it's normally taken out of 20037. This year so far, we have, we've spent 28,900, all from the 20037.
Who's the big user? You're saying the sheriff's the big user.
We do a lot, we do a lot of usage in the sheriff, um, with all the medical forms and stuff. And then, uh, extension is a big user. Health department. Those are prior, the three biggest.
So I, do you think a medical form would have more chance of messing up than the chance of the, uh, for Quinn? Which is privacy and those kind of stuff like that. I was surprised that you could print, you could print out a medical form.
Would they give us a copy of it and we print?
Well, I get the idea, yeah. What's the problem? How can you copy your life forms?
That's, that's, that's a good question that you brought up because, um, no one knows how much each department uses. And Larry and Darlene and I have talked and with Larry taking this over, we talked about trying to, um, keep track of how much each department or uses now.
One of the things I thought would be a good asset is we have a work order system. When anything has to be done or maintenance, it would, everything under printing would come through that work order system so we can document what each department's asking for and what they're using.
And Mark, I think some of those forms are carbon copied forms, which is why they just can't blow copy out.
And those are just go to printing place, they'll do the same thing, right? I agree.
Yeah.
So I think without waiting to use for this, just like we did for a long time, we did bad checks and it costs us more money to do bad checks than it was.
Correct. Um, in our office, we can do everything on the computer now, except that means three pieces of paper that we have to print. So either we, we have Casey make our three, three-part copy for our homesteads and mortgages or print three copies on the, on the printer. So.
Or go to your local printing place, we'll print you three copies of the same material. This is the case, if this brought this to a head, I have no problem with it. Let's get, let's decide and move on.
Right.
And, uh.
Should, obviously, as I stated, we're gonna hold this, talk more about this with the commissioners, or is this?
It's up to you. It's up to you. Have they decided that they were gonna put her under Larry, the commissioners?
The commissioners asked for the reevaluation and we're moved to maintenance.
Okay, so the law will be in your court now to decide.
Your pleasure.
Do we have an estimate of what printing costs that you were looking for?
Are the printing supplies under 20037?
Well, we know we use $28,000. I thought inadequate to raise it to $50,000. I mean, we've gone, we're five months, six months into it, but at 28,000 right now. It's hard to anticipate whatever yours is gonna be like, but we also, I want to look into suppliers to see where I can get better rates at things, too.
Sure, because I'm talking salary, supplies, pension and the whole thing. So you're talking, and you can take all that cost and divide them up to this stuff too. So it's all high.
But we won't, we won't have a good example or, or real good statistics for at least a year, or at least the last six months of this year.
We survived without it for a while, too. The thing is, I guess, we got up there for three months and they first figured it out.
Yeah, I get it. And, and so the idea is that we, we would possibly agree to increasing that from 32 to 50. But then what do we do with maintenance contracts is the next question because we don't know what the number is.
Well, we know what we spent just this year on getting the equipment fixed and repaired so it can be usable. We spent $2,800 just on the one machine. Now, the numbering machine, you can see a lot of wear in it. We, no, I do not have costs on what, that's, but we can see where things are.
You leave the 14,000 since we're.
I was, I was gonna propose for 18,500, which would be a $4,500 increase.
So then do we, then I have a question for the auditor. Do we keep it in the maintenance contracts account or do we create, open up a repair equipment account instead? I mean, what, what, what will be, what will be the best for auditing and tracking purposes in the future? Because I want to call the thing what they, what it really is.
Repairs would be.
Well, there's a 20030 repair equipment account that I found in some other, I don't know if that number's good in every department.
On the maintenance contracts, she does have the Rizzo under contract and she has paid 9,000 to date.
So we would need 9,000 there for next year and then.
Well, I would assume that she owes probably fourth quarter. So that's probably where the 14,000 is figured in.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
I, I'm done for now. I think a motion to table.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second? We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Tabled at this time.
Do you want to talk about this tomorrow or do you want to?
Name is table.
Is there any way?
There's gotta be a way to see if, yeah. Is it saving us money? Is it costing us money?
Right.
Right now, we're, right, we're shooting in the dark.
This is, this, we're, we're gonna not be finalizing budgets till months from now, so we still have time. So we have some time to look at some of these things, I think, like I said.
Okay.
Voter registration.
So we, we, real quick, because you said we're doing fixies first. Okay. And we did, you guys can say.
Wait, wait a second.
Okay, so we did the Superior Court Two. And so with that, here's a problem. The DCS, uh, took away our contract for home visitations for family, kids, kids of that nature. This has been the past done by CASA and we have reimbursed dollars through the DCS. They're trying to get back into the DCS to get this back, but they cannot for this year or next year because their, because of their billing cycle. So through CASA, we already, we already paid $80,000 to CASA here, I believe it is.
I thought 90. 90, I remember.
Okay. Okay, all right, 90 is fine. So they're looking for, again, another department, they're looking for an increase for this year of 12.5 and for next year, they'll come for the 12.5. And for next year, to put in the debt for 25,000, uh, because. It goes under Superior Court Two because Tommy, it just.
I thought it was Circuit Court.
Okay, sorry. Superior Court Two. Yeah, this is, we're Judge Stahlberg.
Okay.
I'm in.
I, I, I thought you were talking about Kaya?
No, I'm talking about home visitations for children because this is the money that, this is not that the judges.
When she.
Yes, CASA.
Right, but when she sent me the email, I thought she said it was under Circuit Court. That's why I'm asking. Okay.
Superior Court Two. So with, with that, because I know that, I know that Tommy Alvesos gives money also beside that.
Prosecutor has.
Prosecutor has too. Now, that's for us to work out, but, but we're not, they're gonna come in front of us for the other one. They'll, they'll come and, they'll remainder balance this year. But do you, you guys want to put in the 25 for next year?
Now, let me get this. Are you asking for this from juvenile probation or from?
CASA, through CASA. Or Family Advocate, let's just say Family Advocate.
No, what, what fund do you want to take this from?
That, that's up to you. I'm not throwing that answer. I don't know that answer.
I'm gonna budget it for next year, so from our savings to our costs, it would balance out, but where are you gonna?
So it'll be in the general fund.
Be in the general fund.
Yes.
Next year, so you're saying that in the budget for Superior Court, we need to add $25,000 line item for, for the DCS.
Yeah, now see, we've had, we've had contract for DCS for 15 years. Isn't that something that's been short? But the governor, no, that they should have decided to cut it down. So they're trying to get that money back again for visitation. And then suddenly they dropped their contract for the last couple of months. We're in litigation to try to solve this and this may go away, but we don't know how long this stuff takes. We're trying to, soon to try to get this money back to DCS.
No, I was just trying to clarify so that we know what step we need to take right now. If it needs to be added to Superior Court Two, we've already approved that, so we need to amend that.
So we need to go back to Superior Two and then.
And is that okay with the judge? Have you talked to the judge about that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So can we find out who did the, uh, who made the motion?
Superior Number Two was account 150. Oh, yeah. We cut the law books too and.
Yeah.
Can we offset that? Right.
Which, that's what I was gonna ask. It's gonna be a new one?
Nope, see, there would be.
We call this account.
They're probably, there's some CASA.
Kaya.
Family Advocate, let's say Family Advocate.
Well, there, the Family Advocate account under Circuit Court is 30091. So just to keep things simple, 30091, CASA, and 25,000.
But you're on, turn your mic on. But you're on, you said Superior One?
Superior Court Two. But it was under Circuit Court. CASA before was under Circuit Court, 148.
Right, so can you add the same account number under Superior Two? That'd be okay?
I'm just trying to keep it.
30091. Is that what you said, Mike?
30091, yes, correct.
25,000.
But we still need to know who made the motion and who seconded it.
Who made the motion and who seconded it?
You made the motion, Jeff seconded it.
Then I amend my motion. Jeff, yours.
And I, um, I agree to. My second on that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Let me, let me ask this. How come the courts don't pay for some of this? You don't want to be?
You mean out of probation user fees?
Well, if, if we could take it from I reckon.
Well, you, you could not take this from, from the user fees because that's adult probation. You could take it from juvenile probation, however, they don't have very much. They have very little user fees.
But, but that isn't, that doesn't even equate.
What, what do you mean?
I don't. I, I just can't see where we can take it out of juvenile probation.
You couldn't.
Or even if the money was there. I just don't see where.
Well, you could take it out of juvenile probation because that's what user fees are for, to supplement. And this would be a supplement for juvenile probation. But because juvenile probation traditionally does not collect, um, a lot of user fees annually. Um, now it's just the opposite on adult, adult. Now, it's just the opposite on adult, adult, adult probation collects a lot of user fees. So.
Just, just for your information, the courts do charge the husband, wife, spouse, or whatever they have now, charge them fees. They're, they're not, because most of them have issues, they're not the large fees. It goes by income. But on your question, Jeff, there could be some funds available through the prosecutor or something like that, if that's actually the question.
That's, that answers that.
Things could be reduced, yeah.
Yes.
I, I had that discussion with Steve. I had a really good meeting with him.
Ready for voter registration, or you got anything else?
Did we vote and all that?
Yeah, we voted, right?
Yes, we did.
Yes?
Okay. We voted, then the, then the verification came in.
Voter registration, 132. Good afternoon.
Just got to find it.
Office supplies, dues. Going through your extensive budget here.
All two lines that we're going to talk about.
Yeah.
Now, there's a big increase on office supplies?
That's really our only budget, Terry.
Are you?
Are you sure, are you sure Deuce hasn't done it?
2020.
Like everybody else?
2020 will be a huge election, and we make all kinds of things for the election, plus the poll books, plus poll lists for the parties.
And our printers are, the ink is expensive.
We kind of added it up for you, if you would like to see it.
There, there's also been a discussion about replacing those printers with Darlene, so that we can cut down the cost of, of the, those are the Hewlett Packard machines, and they are just a fortune to maintain.
They're good for small things, but right, but, but the whole question then comes, I haven't asked a question, and so we threw all this stuff in in-house printing before, why are they printing?
Right.
If there's large amounts, I could, if there's a couple pages printed out, those printer, those copies are good for what they're used for. But why is the in-house, if there's this much large amount, why aren't we doing it through in-house printing again?
It's the whole purpose of in-house printing, so you're not doing everything on level.
They can't print the poll books. They don't have, they don't have access to the SVRS. Yeah, they don't have access to the system.
Also, we do it right on Friday before the election of Tuesday, so that all the people can get them on Saturday when they come to pick up their machines. And we want to get the most up-to-date data, so we can't, just have them done two weeks before. We got, because we have absentee voters and all kinds of stuff going through, and we want to make sure that those get marked and that people don't vote twice, or.
Most of what we print is done through our SVRS system, and there are a handful of people throughout the county that actually have access to this, and that's for security reasons. So we, we print directly from there. If we're, every morning, the laws have now changed as of July 1st, the BMV used to mail us everything when somebody would register to vote there. They don't have to mail this to us anymore. We have to print it out of our hopper. Same thing with the online registrations.
A couple hundred a week, or 200 or 300.
The BMV don't have to, or don't wish to do it?
They no longer are required to mail them.
We don't know what, when it happened or how, but.
July 1st.
Yeah.
How'd you find that out? Did someone quit calling?
Well, the county clerk alerted us, and we also had gotten some notification, again, through SVRS, so.
So do you receive PDFs of these things, or how do you, how are you notified now?
It's called a hopper, and it's, it's kind of broken down. It'll say BMV hopper. We'll click on that, and it'll tell us that we have, you know, 60 in there that were processed overnight. So then we print them out, we, we enter them into the system, one at a time, we cut them, we file them.
So it doesn't really matter who's in office, whether it's Republicans or Democrats, they don't do well if you have a lot of people registered and you find out where the people are from. So it's advantage, whether you, whatever party you're from.
Yeah.
So why, would it come from downstate that says no longer do it, or who said?
I really don't know. We actually leave to go to our conference tomorrow, but these are the new laws that were passed as of July 1st. These, these took.
The DMV doesn't need to notify voter registration?
They have, they can do it electronically.
By mail.
Correct.
She said they don't have to at all.
No, she's.
Not by mail, because they automatically go into.
They're still getting it electronically.
Yes, but we have to print them.
Sorry.
Well, we have problems with them, because the new laws of the 17-year-olds, they're, they're actually, like, registering 16-year-olds, too.
15-year-olds.
Yeah, we're like, so we had to call and talk to them about that, because.
Well, the DMV is.
Yeah, because 17, you can vote when you're 17, if you're going to be 18 by that day of the election. So then they just said, well, let's go, this looks good, you know. I don't know, but.
We just have to watch.
It just seems like there are printers, so why couldn't we interface with their computers? I, I don't get it either.
Well, if we could use it, um.
So one shot idea for you guys, go in the other, to go downstairs. You couldn't take your software, it's on a laptop, it's on a hard drive, what, where's it at?
It's in the.
It's, it's, it's online.
It's online.
Online.
But, um, I don't, I don't know if we could or not. I really don't know.
Well, I suggest, we, I don't mind this right now, but I suggest you give it to them and find out, because that doesn't sound right to me, that you can't print something else.
I know that.
I could print, I could print my printer home right now on my phone.
Yeah, I know.
But not through that system.
I'm being, I'm just using as, as, you can do a lot of things now. It's, it's, to hear it's, you can, I'm surprised. Like, right now, I can print on my phone at home right now, so.
If we had e-poll books, we could get rid of a lot of.
We're not there, though, but, so, again, I don't, there shouldn't be additional costs. You should be able to use the same printer that we're printing off, and it, it's the same cost, there shouldn't have to be an increase there.
Well, the problem here was that the cost to print off of these older printers is very high versus if we were to replace these printers. So that's why they went from 3,200 to 7,000.
Do you guys want to copy this?
That's the whole big thing.
We broke it down.
How much our ink costs, and?
But if you're replacing printers, it's not going to come out of your office supplies. You're going to.
No, it's, no, if we don't replace them, this is what it's going to cost.
Yeah, this is.
If we replace.
We print something like this, that's the ballot. We print these out and give them to all the absentee voters. This is, this is tiny compared to what next year will be, so it'll be like three times that. It's going to be a big election absentee.
There's a law also require you to print this form? You can't be printing any other form, any, any other, uh, what's the word, use of format? Format? Thank you.
Any other format.
What do you?
So if you had a new printer in your office, you could use a different format? It has to be the same format?
Yeah. Print the poll books and all that?
No.
No.
Everything is, that's all.
Again, it comes right out of our system.
Yeah. We download them the night before, and then they're, they're for us in the morning. And it's night, you know, next year will be 92 poll books, times two.
To keep our printers, the printers that we have, we have four printers in that office, two of them, we have to have for the poll books. As it is now, it takes us 12 hours, it took us 12 hours this year. I can't imagine how long we're going to be in there next year. But that's just to print the poll books on Friday. And so right now, with those four printers, the printers themselves are costing us $5,700 a year. One of them is sitting empty, because we don't have the money.
To buy the ink for.
To get the ink and the drums.
Can you take that out of office supplies?
Yeah.
As you chose here, you've only spent $2,294.
We replaced the drums and the ink in one printer.
We haven't done the other.
We have not done the other one.
Because we can't afford to.
Last year, at the, toward the end of the year, we bought extra to kind of get us, get us ready. So that's, that's why we haven't had to spend everything yet, but.
Yeah, we're hanging on to it until the end, so.
Hmm.
I mean, if we don't use it, we'll give it back.
Yeah.
But somebody told me that we need to have the money and be able to buy it, and we want to have a set on hand. We want to buy ink.
Did you see four years ago what they, what they answered?
The front printers, is that the total for that one?
Twenty.
That's per, per machine?
Yeah.
Or is that both together?
No, it's just per.
Okay.
No, wait, it would be.
It's going to cost us roughly, well, $2,928.36 just for the two printers that print the poll books.
And.
There's four drums, there's.
We want to have two sets, so we would want to have, yeah.
Does in-house printing even have a printer? Is this a specialized, like a plotter?
It's like a plotter, it sounds to me like. You're doing, you're doing drums, that, this is a big, you're doing different sheets.
You're talking about the books that the poll workers have that they look up and they got on here?
Poll books are 18.
It's a whole different, so.
They're not really, you know, you sign your name, it's not like, there's not like a lot of information on this thing, isn't that, there's nothing that's.
There's a lot of information on there, their address, their.
Not a lot, that's not like, you're, you're not looking at a, at a, a legal contract, you're looking at.
Yeah.
Name, my address, and so, so forth.
We should have brought.
And we, we can't.
I don't like poll books, I know.
Yeah. We can't change that. There's nothing we can do to change that.
Yeah, but I think there might be somewhere where you might either print somewhere else. If our, if our printers are so obsolete, there might be a way to get, can you find, do you have any access to other counties, or somebody, somebody printing their own, or are they doing, sending out a contracted out?
Some of them do, I think some of the bigger ones do, maybe St. Joe or Porter or Marion County, but.
Would you have to take a look and see, you know, because it might be, you're right, maybe these are obsolete machines, and we're paying too much money to print them out there.
Maybe there's a cheaper, a machine than we can replace these with that would sit, be cheaper on the toner, all the others.
Right, right, and that's, yeah, and that's the other thing that we'd like to look at, because.
Or workshop, you have an office machine that would do it.
Right.
Yeah. We just feel, we feel stuck, because these are the machines that we have, and they are crazy expensive to maintain.
But, you know, we don't care. I mean, they're, they work, and that's what we want.
Right, they're, they're fast.
The one we had in 2016, I'll tell you, it was really fast, and it was really good, and somebody, I don't know how we got it, it was Diane Gonzalez and I, and we got all this free ink that they had had. So we never had to buy any ink in 2016 at all.
Does Joey have it in her office?
And I don't know what happened to it. And I don't know what happened to that machine or anything.
It died.
It died, it slowed down. We killed it.
So what's your pleasure on 132?
2,700 in 16. In 2016, they spent 2,700.
So Sam, that, that's why, that was a.
But we didn't have to buy.
Didn't have to buy ink.
Didn't have to buy ink.
I got enough.
Not once. So there's no change in the office supplies that we're, that we're buying. The change is the cost of the ink.
Okay.
Because, yeah, we did, and you can ask Diane, because we did kind of do it for free.
And you, you've talked to Darlene about, I mean, you're getting your ink cartridges at the best price and all that stuff.
We, we have to go through camps.
We have to go through camps.
What are the contracting out there, the, the supplies plus?
And Darlene has been very good about, we have two of them in there, because those are not very fast. They do a really nice job, but they're not very fast, so we're running both of them at the same time to try to get 92 poll books done.
So what's your pleasure on 132?
Motion approved, voter registration 132.
Second?
We have a motion by Yagowski, second by Rosenbaum. Is there anybody? Any other?
I, my only statement is that we should really replace those printers.
We need to look at it, obviously, something. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Okay.
Right behind you, too, Purdue Extension. They have zero increases all the way down. Purdue Extension. Come on down.
I don't even see Mr. Cunningham on the agenda.
He just needed a place to breathe after jogging from the parking lot.
Did you drive from your house? Girl, did you drive from your house?
I was a cycle.
Okay. Good afternoon, how are you?
Hi, fine.
Good. So Purdue Extension, account 133.
I do have a question of the auditor. I know that we're not really talking about the 100 accounts, but on my sheet on 10, 235, I have over $200,000 for the 2019, but I have nothing in 18. Is this something where there was a new cost in 19? 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth line down.
It's, it's the Extension Educators contract, and we changed that to a 100 account last year.
Got it, thank you. There's 2,000 for advertising. Again, is this something that moved over from another line? Because in 2018, there's nothing there to match it to, and so far, there's been so little spent out of it?
That was new this year, and we're in the process of getting advertising materials, and we just haven't filed a claim for that yet, because they have been ordered, and we just haven't gotten that yet.
Okay. Do you anticipate keeping it within the $2,000 budget?
Yes, I think so.
Thank you.
Where did you get advertising for?
For various programs that we do in the community.
We had no, we had no account. Where did you?
We didn't have an account for it.
Yes, it was new last year. It's for community outreach.
Lease, lease agreements? Uh, yeah, yes, for 6,800, I think he was 27, 21. Uh, yeah, yes, for 6,800, I think he was 27, 21. You only spent 3,654 in 18. What was the lease agreements for?
Those are for our, our computers and printers, the, ours are managed through Purdue IT and they're leased through Purdue.
Then we dropped that, further request for 2020.
Yeah, I see, dropping it, we're not even coming close to spending that much as well. You've increased it quite a bit, even though they have, it went down, it's still, you only spent 3,854 dollars in 18.
And you're on track to spend less than that.
27, 21 this year.
We have, we got two new printers this year and so our lease may go up some, it goes according to the equipment. And it's an annual lease that they figure on each individual equipment and we have four support staff, five educators and three nutrition education program assistants in the office.
I've got a question too on 30002 on postage. What do you guys, um, do you have a meter?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And we request, or we're asking for 2,000 less this year because we're emailing a lot more things and we're also looking into changing the maintenance contract on that because one of our board members was amazed at the amount that we spend on that and so our contract ends up, ends March 1st.
March or April?
March 1st or March 31st in 2020 and so we're already checking in to see if we can't save costs on that.
So I see, okay, yeah, you did have 9,500 before and so you are just requesting 7,500?
Yes.
Okay. Who gets paid for mileage?
Extension educators and county support staff, if they do mileage, like when Captain brings claims here up to the county building.
Man, so we almost, we almost spent 10,000, call it $10,000 last year.
I know it's going to come up later on, what's your, what are you using for mileage fee?
So 53 cents a mile?
Yeah, whatever the county budget is or county claim, or county amount is.
And.
Fifty-three and a half.
That amount went down, so we're going to be talking about that too?
Well, no, we left it at 53 and a half cents. It's, the IRS has it at 58 cents, but we left it at 53 and a half.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And we'll get word in December as far as what they're going to adjust it to for 2020.
It'll, it'll come out a little earlier than that.
Okay. So what's your pleasure on Purdue Extension 133?
I'd like to reduce line 3093 from 6,800 to 5,000.
It's minus 18?
Mm-hmm.
That's it then?
For me, I don't have anything else.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Santana, is there any other questions? Okay, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
911, what did Alt do? Did he fall down? Broke his foot. Ow. That's a very hazardous job. That fall gets you every time.
Pumped on that foot.
Exactly.
Somebody told you sympathy works. We're gonna, we're gonna go off the middle microphone.
Okay. I got you. Okay, you probably have the same copy then that she just slid in front of you that's in that book?
I'm sure I do.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Could there be any larger increases anywhere, Steve?
Um, not large, depending on what definition of large is, the training budget, we'd like to see that increase. That was.
That's rushing down. And that's office supplies, that's really it.
Next week's page.
You need to.
Right underneath the first page.
That's a complete simple.
Can I have all the pages?
Office supplies zeroed out in the first page.
I don't know.
How come on office supplies you're zeroed out for next year? No office supplies next year?
No, we, we can't, we can't do the office supplies under the.
Seven thirty-four, the user.
They have two different accounts.
One is their general fund account and one is their 1222, which is the state E911 account.
So 734 is the state.
So 734 is the state, right, and they cannot, they're not allowed to buy office supplies.
That's why you're allowed for next year.
Right, so it's, it's in the other.
All you had to say.
Can't write anything down on a piece of paper with a pen, you have to do everything electronically.
Electronically, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that works all the time. So is there a reason why the telephone is up, expended 316 a year ago and we're, we're coming back at 350? Is there any way to reduce that a little bit? Or this is all coming from state there?
Yeah.
So I'm stopping.
Yeah, so this just stays in that fund.
So then I'll make the motion?
What, oh, go ahead.
To approve as presented because this is the state fund?
734. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, keep it at 734 as it is. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Santana, any questions, Mr. Yagowski?
So, um, do you see any, I mean, just like that one account that we had before, yes, we can't touch it, but yet you have come back for money, so there's ways of moving this around. Because we do have a lot of these areas that you have high, uh, radio repair, almost $10,000 higher than it's supposed to be and all that kind of stuff. So do you see yourself coming to us for anything for 20, for next year?
Actually, to be honest with you, I see a reduction.
Equipment wise?
I'm looking at the new contracts, I emailed one out to Mr. President there, trying to reduce our fire pages for one, so I'm hoping that I will come, that will be coming here that there will be actually a reduction in what we spend.
Some of these T1 lines are very expensive and that's what they're using right now, so.
And these maintenance contracts, you know, are always, are always expensive, but we can try to renegotiate always. And, and also with the new equipment would come a new maintenance contract that would be included in that, that budget, so.
Were you, would you want people to come for an extra employee?
I did.
To come out of this fund? So right now, you don't see, you don't see any updates as far as your equipment is concerned?
No.
For next year? Okay, thank you.
If I get this new contract that I emailed, that would include new equipment, but it would also reduce costs, so.
Sure. Nothing at this time?
Nothing at this time.
All right, all those in favor of 734 say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is E911, account 177.
There's your two and three. Can I just ask how many people there are in the, in this account, Lieutenant 181? How many people, all right, just in general, how many people do you have working in E91? We have 32 employees. 32 employees, thank you. And are, you pay your utilities separate from everyone else's?
We, we do have, we pay our own utilities that we're allowed to under the, under our fund, our surcharge.
Okay. But these are, this is 177 account, so is this under the surcharge or am I confused? This would be outside that. So this is outside that, so you just said you can pay the utilities under the surcharge, that's what I heard, but this is outside of that. So why isn't this in the surcharge? The utilities. There are some utilities we're not allowed to pay under surcharge. Okay, thank you. There's rules on. I, I, I thought I heard differently, so I'm just trying to clarify, thank you.
Sorry, let me refresh my question back to the 911 734 account. So, do your employee will come out of the 734 or the 177 account?
The 734.
And how much were you requesting for that employee, do you remember?
Yes, third, it was just shy of 40,000 was the salary.
So let's find $40,000 here.
I'm sorry?
I said, let's find $40,000 here that we can pay for that person.
Well, let's find.
That was what I was trying to refer to.
Right.
Well, you can find some of it in telephone. Now, understand, of course, we can't go off a prediction, but there is a new way that state is going to be reexamining how they give us surcharge or how they fund us.
So that amount might be increasing.
That might be increasing, I'm not going to make a prediction, I can't.
So travel, last year you spent 517 on travel, this year you spent $53.
You're asking for 3,750.
What we took travel. Do we need a motion to bring this back up?
You need a, you need a motion, but you don't have to find extra money because there's plenty of money in there.
Plenty of extra money in there.
There's over a million dollars.
We have to take it out of the budget because that billion dollars, we're going to have to replace equipment, so that money's allocated for equipment. A lot of places that are hurting right now from that.
If there's some over budgeted things here, we'd rather take it out of here, so it's trimming.
So you, you want to take it out of the general fund?
No.
No.
Take it out of the 734.
Yes, I was misunderstanding what you're saying.
We're going to reopen 734, so is that a motion, Mr. Yagowski?
Well, I'll reopen it, but I had some suggestions and I originally took them off.
Okay.
So.
So you're okay with reopening?
I'm definitely okay with reopening, but I have suggestions for three reductions.
A second on the reopening.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all right, do you want to go first?
It doesn't matter.
Go ahead.
I had a considering reduction, reducing telephone by 25,000. I also had, the radio repairs are now 20,000, but we've only spent 10 and now 11 this year, so I figured, even if we were at five more this year, that would keep us at 15 and then, I have to read this, I think, I think that was mileage to subtract 500 off of that because I even, I thought that was, but we can take, this is just a suggestion, so if there's anybody else, you were looking to get what, 30,000?
Yes.
I don't know, 40.
40,000. So then let's take a look, relook at these numbers again and telephone maybe 30,000 instead and take a big hit there. Radio repairs, still keep it at 5,000, now we just have to find 5,000 from someplace else. And I'll take any suggestion from anybody.
So, go ahead.
Yeah.
So you got 3,000 on travel?
30,000.
Travel.
Oh, travel.
Taking 3,000 off of that, leaving 750. They need more money if they need to, you just got to come back before us for that.
Okay.
So minus 3,000. You said phones, taking 25,000 dollars off of that.
Well, I thought maybe 30 at this point if we want to get to 40.
Especially if we're going to renegotiate those lines, so.
And if they need more, come back.
About 30 telephones.
Minus 30.
So now we're now at minus 33, so we need 7 more.
Okay.
I was suggesting 5 out of the radio repairs and then we need 2,000 more.
You said, that radio repair is at your council?
That would be the council.
Is it, is it under, is it under warranty for a period of time with the new 800 system?
I don't have to defer to Lincoln.
I think it is for certain things, but like the other day I had them out and I had to pay for a service call, so, but I think it's for certain things.
So, and you could always come back, so how much are you proposing?
I'm proposing 5,000 from there and then 2,000 off of the mileage and that gives us 40,000.
Okay, second. I'm sorry, proposal, Jeff.
So then Jeff will need the second, if he agrees.
Yeah, give me the mileage.
Miles 2,000 down to 1750 and that gives us 40,000 to give back. It's covered for the employee.
I'll second. All right, is there any other questions? All those in favors, the new changes proposed? 734. 734, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. All right, so 177, what was, what are you doing with that?
Our office supplies, I mean, we're, we're at zero now. And I mean, I guess the state doesn't believe we can buy pens, need to buy pens with their, that funding, so we have to go into. Well, we know where you can get toner. I'm sorry? It's an old joke.
You use it all day.
Motion approved at 177 account.
Second.
By Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, is there any other questions on 177? If you're none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can we take a five minute recess? We can't.
And take a five minute recess. All right, we're going to come back from recess. Mr. Yagowski, you got something you want to start off with?
Yes, sir, I'd like to take the voter registration again, I'd like to reduce those numbers, since I made the motion to reduce the numbers from the 107 932 they're asking for to the 104 336. Talk to Darlene.
Wait one second.
And we're going to go back, we'll give them a chance to find it.
Okay.
I just got to use 2019's budget. Reason being, I talked to, the printers were on loan, she has to do the ones they have that they don't, nobody talked to Darlene, they're going to be cheap thing, but they're not going to buy all this ink, they're not doing all the stuff we bought. They have ink left there, we should let them use whatever to print on those, but she has the new printers for them.
So that's going to, line 2001 will remain.
We'll go back to 3200.
3200.
Yes, sir. I'm glad you're right, we'll talk to them.
Who made the motion and, Mr. Yagowski made the motion, who made the second?
I think I might have.
Mike Rosenbaum.
I will agree to that change.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Reduce to 2019 and just put the number back to.
3200.
Reduce to 2019 budget.
Yep, 32, what's that difference?
It's 15, 2,500.
2,500, minus 25.
Yeah, that's the, that's practically the cost for those two machines.
They were on loan to the department, they don't need them anymore.
Yeah, I knew that, but I, we hadn't, no one thought to tell Darlene, told us.
All right. Do we need a, did we go?
You know what happens to some people, it's not like that.
Good afternoon, Sheriff.
Good afternoon.
Roger Posse.
Yes.
The X minus horses.
Yes.
Yeah.
Whiskey.
But a horse and. So we're starting at account 105.
Right, of course, here.
Minus the 100 account. Okay. Where's the one that I marked? I got to find him. 30006 Photography Blueprinting, last year you spent 13, to date you've only spent 555 and that line is for 6,000. Think we could reduce that some or what are we doing with?
You know, that's difficult to say because that budget is, I was just talking to Mr. DiMartino, part of that is a very large plotter printer that we have in our detective bureau we use for investigations, serious bodily injury crashes, fatalities, crime scenes, it's actually hooked up to our 3D scanner that we have and it enables us to print that off for court, but not only do we have to print it off for court, but we have to print it off for prosecution and for defense as well through discovery and that's very, very expensive to maintain, the paper is special for that and the ink is special as well. So while we may not have used the balance of it yet, there's a good possibility that we will because we do have several high profile cases that are preparing to go to trial and of course, we don't want to print it until we have to just in case the case is dismissed or in case that there's a plea agreement where we don't have to.
Last year you spent 1353.
That was a good year for us.
So you don't want to see any of that cut?
We would prefer not, but that probably would be the most favorable place to cut if we had to cut out of that particular budget.
I just want to say that next year I want to go after him so that I can use some of that, some of those lines.
His lines. I'm surprised you didn't cut a deal where you're going to hire him.
We're not there yet.
So, I'm sorry, how about if we reduce that by 2,000 and keep you 4,000 in there? And like we say, we'll see what, what happens, okay?
Sure.
So you got 30006, reduction of 2,000, minus two grain.
I have a quick question on, how many employees are included in this budget?
On the 105?
Yes.
Would be 67, I believe.
Yes. And the board members are of something?
The mayor board.
The mayor commission?
Thank you.
I couldn't remember that part.
They're paid by the meeting. Sheriff, 3021, I know last year we took that big cutback because of the new radios that were purchased and of course, the radio repair, of course, too. But we went from the 18,000 we typically were at and we knocked it down to 5,000, it says, so far you spent 1,167 dollars. Yes, and that's by virtue of the fact that we had just gone into a new radio platform, the 800 megahertz and most of that, of our equipment was covered under warranty and also a licensing agreement was part of that upfront cost, but we're getting to an area where we're going to have to start paying for licensing and we may have to have repairs because things will be coming out of warranty. That'd be three. That'd be right, that'd be 3022, I'm talking about 3021. To 5,000.
Radio equipment to buy, this is radio equipment.
I said, I know that the two are. Yeah, we, we do have several new people and we will have to be buying radios for them. And those are.
Five new hires?
5,000 apiece.
Are they really?
Yes.
And you did just get five back from the academy or what have you, kind of, sort of?
Yes, but we have four that are going to be going to the academy in September, but not only do we have the cost of their portable radios, but we have mobile radios for three vehicles that we're going to be outfitting them in.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are these four replacement four or these four?
Some of them are, but also keep in mind that last year the council gave us permission to hire three additional employees, so those are the three additional that I was talking about.
Just wanted to.
Yes, so when someone retires or someone leaves for another agency, they obviously need their equipment. So rental equipment number 3023, you spent, you had, you spent that while it was reduced and do you, what is that, what is that used for? I'm sorry, 30023, the emergency equipment?
Yeah.
Rental, rental emergency.
Rental emergency. Last year, what did we use it for? You know, in the past, we've had to have technology that's been brought in for crime scenes, trying to remember what we, what expenses we had last year where we had to have emergency equipment.
You spent 3,500 this year, so.
I think you used it as a for toner.
I'm going to rule you out of work here. He's all today, we won't have tomorrow.
Do you recall?
On account 30023, pull it up and see what they're. On your 30002 postage, do you use the meter?
We do, but there are some things, for instance, when we have to send evidence in a package or we have to return guns or we're receiving guns that are CUD, it comes out or we have to return guns or we're receiving guns that are CUD, it comes out of that account.
Well, she's still looking there, too. Let's look at schoolboy equipment, for example. I don't know if you got new stuff last year or what, if you had to outfit somebody because you did spend, or a few probably, 3470, but to date, it's only 656.
Spending all of the end of the year.
Yeah, we usually do spend it at the end of the dive season, which is the traditional dive season when we realize what our needs are or what we've worn out. It could be any number of things and right now I can't tell you off the top of my head what kind of needs they have. I think last year we got an underwater communication system for all of our divers so they could talk underwater to each other and to those that were onshore.
Okay, last question, 32040 Personal Healthcare. Is that for?
That is for psychiatric professional, for our staff that may need it. They've been involved in a traumatic event.
I see at 18 you spent 2,250, so far you spent zero.
I'm quite surprised at that because I know we've made several referrals.
It's a good year.
We just made a good bill as of yet.
It's a good year.
So we can cut that some and you can always come back?
Yes.
Let's think positive. Let's think positive.
Certainly.
So, 5,500?
2,000.
5,500?
Yes.
I'm sorry, which account is that on?
320.
32, I'm sorry.
32040 toward the bottom.
You're going to take.
Personal Healthcare. We're going to 5,000.
5,500.
So minus two, minus two grain.
So we took 2,000, 3006, and that's 2,300.
You want to do it? Does anybody else have anything?
And we're not playing.
105.
The rental emergency equipment that you were asking for has been paid to Star Uniform and Crash Data Group.
I think Crash Data Group was for cables that we needed to extract data from an emergency recorder from a fatality crash. We didn't possess those cables and I don't remember what Star Uniform was. It may have been for some protective gear for those that are involved in the fatality accident crash team.
What's your pleasure, 105?
I've got, no, I'm not done, I guess. Let's go all the way to the bottom, 32925, category Other. Let's see. Last year, 17,608. To date, nothing. We did, well, 14180. What is, what, I mean.
Bulletproof vests.
That's all vests?
And per Indiana code, the county government's required to provide those for us and we traditionally buy those towards the end of the year. We have 16 that are up for renewal because they're on a rotation basis and they're only guaranteed for five years.
Anything else?
No, not out of this one. I don't see anything, anybody else?
What's your pleasure?
Motion. Yeah. Motion to approve 105 with a reduction of 32040 by $2,000. I'm sorry, I'm skipping pages. And with a reduction on 3006 of minus 2,000.
You have a motion?
On second.
Two seconds. Molnauer, is there any other questions? If you're none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Sheriff's Pension Fund, 238.
This is the same thing that we'll take out at the beginning of the year, so we just ask for it to be zeroed out right now until. Motion to zero out Sheriff from 238, brought up at First Ringer meeting.
And James Wink. Motion by Mr. Igowski. Second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any questions? If you're none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
That's it.
Courthouse Security.
Quick question, what are the maintenance contracts here under?
Everything from the cameras to the integrated door systems for the county buildings that automatically lock them.
And the scanners?
The scanners, yes.
Has that generally been paid at the end of the year also because nothing's been paid to date?
Yeah. Sometime after budget hearings, mid to late summer.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion by Mr. Igowski for account 182, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? If you're none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is County Jail, count 145. So, before we dig into this real far. We've had some brief conversations on taking over the, cooking the meals for juvenile center out there.
Yes.
So that's something that we're going to look at. They come tomorrow, but we've got it flagged on theirs. And tentatively, how is your staff in your kitchen right now?
We're prepared to do that. We could, providing that we get the blessing from the judge and that we would have to overtake their nutritionists. We would have to make sure that they were providing for them what is required by law. Be quite honest with you, I'm not sure what that is, but that wouldn't be difficult for us to do.
This would be Judge Alves's, correct?
Correct. And I've not talked to him at all about it.
I believe him and I had a conversation about this also. So, are you currently up to staff in your kitchen? Are you short?
Yes.
Because I know you're always looking for.
We are currently too short, but we're, as far as our manpower is concerned, we're good right now. We're, we're not critically short.
So these, how many, how many employees do they have out of?
We have one full-time.
How many do they have out of juveniles?
Oh, I don't have any idea.
Have any idea in their kitchen?
Three, I think.
Three?
I think he's correct.
Full-time, I think.
I think he's correct. There's definitely one full-timer and the other two are part-time, I thought.
I was thinking, yeah.
In fact, not only have you and I talked about it, but Mr. Molnauer, Mr. Molnauer and I have talked about it as well and it makes sense and we'd be happy to provide that service. We're doing it anyway. Just keep in mind that they do have different nutritional requirements.
That was the main thing, I think, that we have to make sure that we meet with the kids.
Yes.
Gentlemen, what do you want to do with 145?
I just want to, before we go further, the 30135, the last account, Professional Services, is this for that medical contract?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I.
Yes.
Call it out on that. And we're still going to do the thing where they come back for food all the time. Is that correct?
If, you mean if that, if hit the budget?
No.
What do you mean?
Last year they used 629,000. We budget 210. They come back each time they need it, we take it.
Right.
One other question, how many people are employed under this, under the jail?
Approximately 78, including part-time.
I'm trying to figure out what the head count is everywhere as I go along.
Anything else?
Motion to approve.
You have a motion by Mr. Molnauer.
I'll second it so we can have the M and M.
Second it. Mr. Rosenbaum. To approve account 145. Is there any other questions? If you're none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item, Court 4, County Garage, 141. You mean, you got a whole bunch up here, don't you?
No.
No, I'm looking at you.
Which account is it that has the tool allowance? Is there, I didn't know if it was that uniform?
Equipment. By the way, thank you for the information. I'm going to give you my thumb drive because I can't find computers that have disc anymore. Sorry.
We talked about it with Rosebaum. Next year we'll transition it as thumb drives because you're right.
Just want to have a little human.
It's all be blank.
I had to go to work to go borrow one.
Will you open it though?
Yeah, it's fine. Good information. Thank you.
Good.
Excellent, appreciate it.
That's, yeah.
I, yeah.
I was able to open the one with, it had all of the service. I didn't know if that was what was on the second one as well, but.
Pictures of cars.
I didn't get no pictures.
You didn't get two CDs in your packet?
I got two CDs, but I couldn't read the second one. I don't know what was on it. Didn't look like there was any information.
Were you able to see it?
I absolutely was and I talked to Ron Heeg too and I gave him kudos. I wish more departments would be as thorough as, as you guys were, guided out to us and I thought that was really good information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I'd like to dig into, I took a tour of the facility and I just want to dig into the 2015 uniforms account. Now, there's 3,500, there's four people there. What is, how does that break out?
Uniform rental. They wear a uniform and then they turn it in and an industrial service comes in because of all the grease and oil and engine fluids. They take it, professionally clean it and then bring it back to them.
I know that's done everywhere. I just didn't see it when I was there, so that's why.
Actually, that is part of their uniform. They just happen to wear shorts because it's not air-conditioned out there and we allow that by this time of the year.
Got it. And then, one of the things I came across while being out there was we have a tool allowance for them for $250 per person. And it's pretty well-standing to do this and I'm, I'm kind of familiar with the business of car dealerships and having these workshops. And $250 is not necessarily enough per person. So I wanted to suggest that we raise that at least $100 per person this year, 350. So I wanted to add 400 to the 2015 account.
Under uniforms, is that where that?
313.
Oh, it's under 30013?
Yes.
So then I make that.
So it's under maintenance and repairs?
So I.
That's where the tool allowance is?
So I would ask that we add $400 there.
So on that 30027 Education Instruction, of course we're spending this year, we didn't spend it last year and we didn't spend it the year before.
You guys come for $1,000 an hour.
Yeah, every now and again, there is something new that comes up with an automobile. We have to send them away for training. It may have been that last year, the year before, they didn't or they did online training. But certainly we could cut that and take it out of our regular training budget.
Just do it that way, right?
So you'd zero that out?
Less there?
Zero that up. Yeah, you can take it up.
Minus 1,000, correct?
Correct. Motion approved with the changes.
How much did you add?
That were made. You added 400, $400 added to the maintenance repair, 30013.
I do have a question of the auditor. Ms. Switzke, on this, when we have, when we're trying to do an additional increase of reimbursement, is that a policy change? Maybe it's an HR question or is it just something that's just budgetary? We don't have to go and do any other?
If you're increasing their tool allowance, if it's part of their personnel job description, it says it's 250 and we're changing it to 350.
350.
I don't want to create a problem with.
We need to make sure that that's changed there also.
No, that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it would be through them, not through us.
Mr. Igowski?
I'm sorry. Maintenance Repair, 30013, increase 400. 300270. Does anybody else have anything else on it? Motion, that's my motion.
Motion by Mr. Igowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions? If you're none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you.
Supreme Court Court 4. Couldn't get anybody else here today. An hour and a half shy of 4:30. Burt?
We didn't officially answer. We just thought it was one, one full-time and two part-time?
They had two full-time out there with a kitchen manager, a full-time cook and then utilized part-timers.
Who's the nutritionist? So somebody just tells them this is what you got it.
Yes, and then they, they look over the menu to make sure that it.
So it'll be a matter of you just redoing your, adding it to yours. So I mean, it might not be something we can do immediately right off the bat, but I think it's definitely something we need to work towards, so.
We get to figure out how to get the food across to.
Right.
It's not a problem to get it out to work, it shouldn't be a problem to get it.
Right, they're delivering it next door.
Did not realize.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a question?
Did they, did they add somebody? Because it used to be two part-time, one full-time.
As long as I know, it's been the kitchen manager and the full-time staff and then the part-time. But they are down right now on their numbers. They don't.
I was just going to ask, how many people they got out there right now?
They have the full-time kitchen manager and the full-time staff, but both those individuals are out of the office currently and they're, we're trying to find part-time cooks out there. Because they had to pull, they pulled one, someone from a youth specialist worker into the kitchen to help out.
You know how many are out there right now? I mean, not working.
In flirting.
Juveniles. No, I don't know that, no.
Would you like to answer? There, some, oh, they can tell us? There's, there's three in lockup and six in the non-secure.
I thought around 10 is what they've been.
Is there any way to see if.
Their numbers were reduced.
Somebody like EMS can come in as soon as we're done? We only got one more then we're done.
Yeah, anybody. We're still an hour and a half.
Anybody?
I mean, we got Superior Court 4.
So we're ready for Superior Court 4?
Superior 4, come on down.
You're the next contestant.
We do have a judge. Our other two judges didn't show up.
Pardon?
Our other two judges didn't show up, so we have, you're our first judge.
Okay, good.
Yay.
Starting to get a compromise.
I don't think we're talking about this anymore.
I've got Judge Street linked with me and Amy Galinas from our office.
That almost doesn't sound like it's even on.
Is that light?
The light's on.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just didn't realize you had it.
Well, everybody's let off with all the cuts that they're proposing, so if you'd like. Oh, no. Nobody's buying into that at all today.
Nobody's so giving today. Although, I do have, I'd like to start off, although you do have a very small number in 30038 law books. The question was coming up all day long today between prosecutor probates, the different probates and the judges of different courts, whether or not any of these law books are similar, used in other locations where they are digitized or digital online and we can save money by having more users under one contract. And we didn't know if that was already being done amongst the group of judges. And, and so I just figured that we would throw that out there to start.
Sure, not that I'm aware of. Everybody gets, I mean, there's Lexus and there's a lot of things that are online but we all get every year updates to the, to the state and the federal rules and we get those in hard copies. Whether they're online, I don't know, but those are.
So for you, it's hard copy primarily?
For those two things. Everybody uses Lexus online and those are updated, I believe, every three months, okay? But we're all given physical hard copies of the federal rules and the Indiana rules of evidence and civil procedure, things like that.
The other thing that we're looking to do is take that money out of probation user fees. If we found out we can do that, so we're looking to take, supply all the law books out of that except for the prosecutors may need to come out of a different account because probation cannot pay those. So that's one thing. You don't have an issue with that, do you?
I don't.
We're in that same conversation, Judge, adult probation, we can't do anything with that fund, we understand it but there's a lot of numbers that, that are just high numbers, but it doesn't make no difference because we can't change them anyway. But we were going to try to talk to all the judges and see if we could open, add a line item for the Criminal Rule 28.
Say 26.
26, I'm sorry, 26, 26, 28, whatever it takes. Whatever it takes. That we could not, not reduce any of his money because he's, like I said, he doesn't spend all his money in some of these accounts. But put that money that we could sit there and say, okay, do you need this much in training? Instead of, instead of $10,000, he had 15 listed, but he doesn't spend that much. Can we take that 5,000 and put it into criminal rule 26?
Okay.
So, I'd like to see, you're our first judge, so we have to kind of sort of pick on you, but if you want to talk it over and maybe sometime get back...
To talk it over with who?
The judges.
The judges?
Yeah.
So, this would be money coming from probation user fees, and in a certain segment, just what he's not using, see if that could be allocated for criminal rule 26? Yeah, I can discuss that. I can also bring you some good news. I spoke last week with the Indiana Office of Court Services as well as Chief Justice Rush, and she is very interested in, she's, they've already sent us the paperwork, they sent it to Steve today, and they're gonna give us $60,000 towards criminal rule 26.
For two years. For two years.
That's each year.
Yeah, each year.
Yeah.
So, I appreciate it, because like I said, we're not going to decrease anything, we're just going to make his numbers within reason, and just take the funding and just put it into another line item, that's all.
Okay.
And it sounds like we're gonna need that line item anyway, now we're getting $60,000 to put in that line item anyway.
Okay. I can tell you that I know for a fact, when I left today, there are two psychological evaluations upcoming, and we just got a bill for $950 for one.
So, you're already over?
So, we're a little over on that area. And again, that, you can't gauge that from year to year.
Your postage, 3002, last year you didn't spend anything, you're asking for 250 for next year. Do you not use, there's a meter in Michigan City, do you not pick your...
I asked Ms. Galinas about it, and she said that she takes it to the clerk's office, and they take care of it.
So, you don't do that, so that's good. It just goes away and you never see it again.
Goes somewhere.
So, if you wanted to put that in psychological, or however you feel you need to accomplish that right now with apparently the procedure that's being used, we're not using that for postage.
Okay. Travel is the same question next time, and see, that didn't use anything last year, didn't use any this year, can the same thing go in the same line item?
I'm not really sure, that's a good question.
How much we have to make up for that line item?
Well, you said, how much is the psychological exam? You spent 950 so far this year out of $500.
Right, well, one of the, one of the doctors that is frequently used was 700, just upped the bill to 950 for one, so...
Is there a new doctor?
And you have two coming, one, you said?
Two coming.
Okay, then, 3002, 3003, take those two funds to 30088.
Making that 1,050.
Yes, sir. What are you doing in printing and office supplies?
With printing and office supplies? I spoke with Ms. Galinas about that, and typically what she's been doing is kind of creating forms and just using the copy machine to do that versus in-house printing now. Yeah, did you want to address anything on that?
Just like our bale of sheets and such, I've just been redoing it.
Just getting colored paper and doing it.
Just use colored paper and print it.
So, last year, in last year you used 180 bucks, this year, of course, zero, so if you had, so like 250 out of that, throw it into the same account? Oh, you still got something there.
Keep the 250 and then move 250 to the psychological.
So, 250 out of that, yeah, 3005, to move it to psychological. Repairs and equip, uh, 250. Repairs and equipment, would you use that more?
PC 250.
Yeah, thank you.
For repairing equipment.
Sorry?
For repairing equipment?
What equipment are you comparing?
I'm sorry.
Well, we've got copy machines.
That should be all going through Darlene's.
Pardon?
That goes through Darlene, you don't...
Okay. Then I would assume that's probably equipment in the courtroom, the FTR and things like that, do you know? Yeah.
The FTR, I think, is suffering.
Yeah. Our recording equipment in the magistrate court and downstairs would be, that would be what would be used for there.
Look, see if they can look it up.
Okay, and transcripts, you had $348, you spent nothing, last year you spent nothing. Can we throw that $348 into psychological services?
Okay.
Okay.
Minus 348.
So, motion approved minus the...
Reallocating.
Reallocating those line items, do you have the count for me, Mike?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, by eliminating those, that the 250, the 300, the 250, and the 348 means that in your psychological service, you're going to get 1148.
Plus the five.
The, yeah, an additional 1148, we're moving all those to that one for you.
So, it's 1648.
1648, your new number.
Yep.
Okay.
It makes sense, right? All right, that's my motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum, is there any other questions on 152?
Can you go over them again, Mr. Rosenbaum?
It is account 3002, postage, reducing that.
To zero.
To zero, taking 250 off of that. Next item is travel.
Zero.
Didn't you? You took this one down. 30003, travel, reducing that by 300. Printing, 3005, reducing 250 out of that. Transcripts, transcripts, 30037, reducing it by 348.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
And that's all going to psychological.
Correct.
Yep.
Now, just remember, they're spending this money this year, so she's still going to need to redo something in her budget if she has a shortfall to cover this year's, so this is...
Or pay a visit this year.
Okay.
So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Great, thank you, see ya.
Thank you. All right, looks like EMS is here. They look happy to be here, look at, look at this.
It's like going in the dentist, the sooner we get it over with, the better.
Yeah.
We were still prepared.
There's EMS.
EMS, all right, come on down.
Good afternoon.
How are you? We appreciate you stepping up your, coming today instead of tomorrow, so.
No problem, we're doing our best here.
It's like if you're gonna get a shot, you'd rather get it over with.
I guess. So, we're not, we're not requesting any changes. We went through our budget a few years ago with the help of Christie, and got everything kind of organized and situated, and everything's been running good, and so we do run short on a couple line items, but we always come back and ask for it, and we're used to that, and so had a pretty good routine going, so.
I was struggling because we've added the seventh ambulance with the whole new crew, and yet the difference overall is a small increase of like 21, not even 21,000?
In our 100 accounts, or?
No, overall budget, including your 100s, so if you did not play with the 100s, then we're just looking at all the other items then. So, all the 100s then have to be adjusted for the additional crew.
Right, and that had been done last year for this year.
Okay, and then the next, the next question I have is the gas, fuel, and oil, you know, if you had to, you had to come back before, we're at 36,700 already this year.
Correct.
I see that just being...
Right. Which we had another submittal on 715 of $6,700 also. So, there's some submittals that you guys haven't seen, because we just put them in, so, but that was a recent one we just had, so we're actually down to 6,500 in gas and oil. So, that's one of those line items we always run short on, but...
And then you just come back?
We come back and ask, and we've addressed that previously the last few years, and that was our advice we were given, is to come back.
So, the questionnaire, 30057, credit bureau fees?
Yes.
You asked for $8,000, and I think he was about $3,000 last year, he was about $1,800 so far this year.
Correct.
Is there, can we lower that number down to five?
Yes, we can. If we do that, do you mind if we put that into the one area that we're short, is that okay?
Are you sure?
Deleting it totally out of our budget, because we're short in either gas and fuel or our other ops, which is the 200...
At least gas and fuel, I'd rather it come back, because you always do...
Right, right.
What's the other one?
Other ops, other operations, that's our oxygen, we take out of there, and this year we're gonna be short in that. Our oxygen prices are going up, and then with the addition of the additional ambulance also, it's shortened our budget a little bit, so...
What's that number, is that the 20021?
21, correct.
So, what are you using as credit bureau fees for them? People in that pan, you're checking her?
Yeah, bad credit, yeah, we send them, send it to the credit bureau and hopefully try to get back some bad credit.
Ms. Witzke or Chris, when did we, this, 30057, do you have 2016 numbers?
Darren, when did we go with that new company, was that in 2016? Because that's when we set that to 8,000.
Well, that's when they changed that back to our deal.
Right.
They have to bill us and subcharge the patient.
Right.
So, before we weren't being invoiced monthly, they were charging, putting the charge on to the, that debt person.
Right.
Instead of us, now they...
They finally can't do that anymore, they had to charge up, so therefore we had to set that, and we set it at 8,000, not knowing what it would be from year to year, so...
So, yeah.
In 2016, they spent 5,600.
Okay.
In 16, okay.
Let's just go ahead and give it a try at 5,000, you want to move that to the oxygen?
Yes, if you don't mind. Other ops.
Which number is it? 0021.
Other supplies?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it is.
So, what are you moving over there?
3,000.
3,000.
So, the total stays the same?
3, 3,000.
So, you, you can't charge the client, for lack of a better term, for, it'd be like legal fees, wouldn't it? You can't charge them for credit?
Yeah, they came back and said that the company that we're working with can no longer do that, and they said that we would have to pay for that. We still get reimbursed if they do get the money back, we get that money back, obviously, but they can't charge for their services directly to that individual.
But they add it to the fees that the people owe.
That's with how they were doing it.
Right.
And realize that they could not do that.
You would think if you put some, turned somebody over to collections, that you could collect the fees on top of the...
So, because it's emergency medical services, and it's not going into like a doctor's office where you're usually signing a document that says you'll be charged 1.5% interest, you'll be charged any fees for collection, maybe attorney's fees, because there's not that contract, it's an emergency medical service, that it's really, we bear that cost. But there are companies out there that will just do collection work based on a percentage. You know, so there are other options out there, but yeah, so tentatively, your group is, your collection partner, people are doing it?
We do it, we have a collections clerk, and then turn it over to professional account services here in town.
Okay.
Once we've exhausted everything we can do.
All right, any other recommendations for EMS, count 140?
Motion to approve with that change of cutting 30057 back 3,000 to make it 5,000 for 2020, and then taking that 3,000 to 20021 for other supplies and adding it there, I don't see anything else.
Is there a motion?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Santana, seconded by Mr. Yagowski. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, thanks you guys.
Thank you for coming today.
Yeah.
So, probably, Mr. President, this time, just take off soil and water for tomorrow, so 100 counts, so we don't have to worry about that one at the end of the day.
Or is that one soil and water?
158, so your last, tomorrow, so we don't have to worry about that one.
Let me ask you that.
Nice.
How about MS 40, it's kind of late in the day too.
What are we doing with soil and water?
There's nothing, it's 100, it's 100 counts, there's nothing.
Okay. Yeah.
So, MS 4 is usually a pretty easy one.
I know, I thought of that one too.
It usually has a fit, usually we talk about.
So, we don't have to do soil and water?
It usually has a fit.
Yeah, I'm still trying to find it, there it is, soil and water. So, that one's done.
For example, professional services, he's 365, 140, he's got 7,835.
It's gonna be a change.
Just seeing what, where the hell they go during the afternoon.
No, it comes, it just comes. Yes.
Yes.
Ask her, did she talk, ask her she talked to...
She's watching TV.
Darlene.
Tell her yes, Darlene's gonna take care of it.
You do have some things on LAD, so we really can't do that. Okay. What'd the clerk say? You shot the clerk. I shot the clerk.
Same budget as last year. I'm gonna just ask you.
Get there, wanna see what I have for comments.
Very, how much for you? Go ahead, I see it, keep it the same, the professional services, 7835, he spent 140